I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on the mission of God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Court.
Yes, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Tuesday, December 19, 2017. The time is now 7:59. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice of this meeting was published in December 1, 2016, issue of the Nutley Sun and the Herald News, and the December 2, 2016, issue of the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall bulletin board, and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petracco?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Minutes, Madam Court.
Yes, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Meeting, Minutes for November 21, 2017, and November 27, 2017. I need a motion, please.
Move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Bills?
Yes, Mayor. Bill is for Tuesday, December 19, 2017. Public Affairs, $117,708.11. Revenue and Finance, $2,555,698.20. Public Safety, $51,386.54. Public Works, $82,982.9. Parks and Public Property, $184,938.38. Total Payroll, $920,544.80. For a grand total of $3,913,220.12.
Move the bills?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment, Madam Court?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer for the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the forum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Public comment on agenda items only.
Which one are we referring to, Sue? Yeah, we have a capital ordinance that was completed and closed, and there was some money left over for that. And we're repurposing that to actually do the digital scanning and scanning of records that we have to maintain. Oh, so is that where you put it? Not going back in the terminal line? No, it's being used. Just a reallocation. I understand. There's a resolution, I think, talks about it more directly, but yes, the answer is it's freeing up the balance and then establishing the capital so that we can complete the scanning requirements.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners on Agenda Items Only?
Michael O'Driscoll, 133 High Street. Just noticed on the agenda, ordinance number 377, the minimum order introduction of salaries of certain officers and employees of the Towne of Nutley, County of Essex. Are we looking to raise salaries on these employees? Is that what this is about?
Michael, what I'm doing is lowering the minimum base and the maximum salary. Those are being lowered from what they are now. And in addition to registered environmental health specialists, I've actually eliminated the position of health inspector, which was a very, very high salary. And we're going to hire, at least under this title, a much lower salaried person. Right now, these three positions, in comparison to individuals who have these positions around the state, these are very low. So the idea is to make sure that when anyone comes in, they're not going to get paid an extraordinarily high salary, and that we're just going to cap it on top at a lower rate.
Is it okay if I may ask what that salary might be a year? What would that salary be? How many employees are we talking about? Five, four?
Well, in this case, you're talking about three.
Three? And what is the cap? As high as you can go?
I don't have those figures right now, but I'll get them to you. But they're much, they are higher. I think they're about 10,000 or 15,000 higher than what this is right now. So I've lowered them pretty substantially.
Thank you for your conservatism. I truly mean that. Thank you for your conservatism. I am a true conservative.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners on Agenda Items Only? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close public comment?
Motion closed.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Board of Commissioner Announcements? Commissioner Evans?
Yes, I have one in that on December 7, we held our bond sale for a bond anticipation note, which is short-term borrowing in the amount of $9,867,000. The note matures on May 1 in 2018, which will reevaluate at the time whether or not we'll continue short-term borrowing or move it to long-term. And the net interest rate on the sale was 1.32%, which was very competitive, and we're very pleased.
Anybody else have questions? Good. Okay. Ordinance introductions. Commissioner Rogers?
The ordinance number 3377, an ordinance to amend the salaries of certain officers and employees of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey. Counsel, do I have to read the whole thing, or can I read the?
Just the title.
Title.
Just the title.
I do? I read the whole thing.
Just the title, Commissioner.
Just the title. Okay. Okay. An ordinance to amend the salaries of certain officers and employees of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance or final passage by the Board of Commissioners to be held on its second reading on the 2nd of January 2018, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, I have an ordinance introduction by title, ordinance providing for the digital archiving of code enforcement records and related services in the Township of Nutley in appropriated $200,000. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertise in Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance or final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on January 16.
19.
I'm sorry?
January 19, correct?
I have, okay. Sorry, Commissioner. 16. Okay. Is it the 19th or the 16th? 16th? January 16, 2018. This, by the way, this ordinance is, we have mandatory record retention requirements that are mandated by the state, so in the code office, any changes to a property follows the history of the property, and you have to keep those records. So keeping a paper copy of those records is becoming burdensome and we're actually out of space. So we're allowed to digitize those records, and this is the process of keeping up with the state's requirements for retention of records. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Public hearings. Ordinance number 3374, this is public hearing that the Board of Commissioners will convey a small triangular portion of Baltimore Street right away to TFJ Kingsland in exchange for the paving of Baltimore Street, and this was a condition of their zoning application approval. Would anybody like to be heard on ordinance number 3374? Seeing none, move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, 3375 is an ordinance providing for a down payment of $233,013 for the purchase of a new fire truck with the peripheral and related equipment for the township. It's a prepayment of 233, which allows us to save $22,000 on the overall purchase of this vehicle.
Would anybody like to be heard on ordinance number 3375?
I think it's around 830,000, somewhere around, it's close, 833, I believe. Well, there's stuff that goes on the truck, whatever, it's the hoses, whatever, pieces of equipment that go on the actual physical truck itself. Yeah. Commissioner Petracco would know more details. Yeah, but it's just.
Mr. Evans is spot on with it. It's all things that are needed. A lot of the stuff when the fire, when we had the accident, got ruined in that accident, and, you know, we planned for that, you know, through capital funding, and a lot of that stuff was covered by insurance anyway. So instead of taking the damaged product and putting it on a brand-new truck, we got the money from the insurance to do that, which, like I said a bunch of times to you, that, thank God, there was no serious injuries, but it winded up working out much better because the truck got totaled and we got probably four times the amount of money that we could have gotten on a trade-in value. You're very welcome.
Anybody else like to be heard on the ordinance? Seeing none?
Move to close.
Second.
Public hearing?
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Resolutions. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes. Whereas a resolution was adopted on December 28, 2016, awarding a contract to Advance Mechanical Corp., 173 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, and whereas the agreement entered into on the bid specs between Advance Mechanical Corp. and the Township of Nutley was for a period of one year, with the option to be extended for one year, and whereas funds are available from 8-01-508-200 pending adoption of the 2018 municipal budget, not to exceed $40,000, and capital ordinance 3344B in the amount of $50,000 for the year, and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, subject to the adoption of the 18 municipal budget. Now therefore be resolved that the Township of Nutley renew the contract with Advance Mechanical Corp., 173 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, for plumbing, heating, air conditioning, and refrigeration service and purchase pursuant to the previously signed agreement. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be it resolved by Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township Clerk be, and she is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for recreation uniforms and equipment. This is actually for our employees, and it's a contractual issue. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that sealed bids shall be due on Wednesday, January 10, 2018, at 3:00 p.m., addressed to the Municipal Clerk, Nutley Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, at which time they will be publicly opened and read in the commission chambers, third floor Township Hall, at 3:00 p.m. prevailing time. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas a resolution was adopted on December 28, 2016, awarding a contract to Sal Electric Company, 83 Fleet Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, for electrical services, and whereas the agreement entered into between Sal Electric Company, Township of Nutley on January 1, 2017, was for a period of one year, with the option to be extended for another year, and whereas funds are available from 8-01-508-200 pending adoption of the 2018 municipal budget, not to exceed $40,000 for the year, and $40,000 in capital ordinance 3344B, and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, subject to the adoption of the 2018 municipal budget. Now therefore be resolved that Township of Nutley renew the contract with Sal Electric, Inc., 83 Fleet Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, for electrical services pursuant to the previously signed agreement. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be it resolved by Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township Clerk be, and she is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for tree removal services, now therefore be resolved by Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that sealed bids shall be due on Wednesday, January 10, 2018, at 3:00 p.m., addressed to Municipal Clerk, Nutley Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, at which time they will be publicly opened and read in the commission chambers, third floor Township Hall, at 3:00 p.m. prevailing time. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be it resolved to the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that in accordance with the provision of RS 40A 4-58, the following transfer of appropriations in the 2017 Budget B, and same are hereby authorized and approved, in the Department of Parks and Public Property, from group insurance in amount totaling $31,150 to public buildings and grounds, other expenses in the amount of $5,000, Parks and Public Property, other expenses $18,000, Recreation Committee $8,150, totaling the like amount of $31,150. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. I have a series of resolutions. The first one is the reappointment of Nizavachi and Company as our registered municipal accountant pursuant to NJSA 1944A 20.4 and 20.5 as a non-fair and open contract. The contract is for a year, beginning January of 18 through December of 18. The total fees amount to $153,805.83, and it reflects a zero increase for next year for this particular vendor. They have filed their completed business entity disclosure certifications. Funds will be certified, are certified, subject to the adoption of the 2018 budget. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley authorizes the Mayor to enter into a contract with Nizavachi as our certified public accounts and consultants for the above services, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
My second resolution is the appointment of a real estate appraiser, which is important for tax appeals, real estate appraisals, and court appearances that we do every year. It's a non-fair and open contract pursuant to NJSA 1944A 20.4 and 20.5. The fees for Hendrix Appraisal Company have been reduced from last year with $75,000 in '18. The fee will not exceed $50,000 for the entire year of 2018. Funds will be certified, are certified, subject to the adoption of the 2018 budget. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners that the Mayor has authorized to enter into a contract with Hendrix Appraisal Company, LLC, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley, the Treasurer be, and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of wire charges in the amount of $343.14 for Block 730 Qualifier 5 for $230.62, and for Block 1701 Lot 4, $112.52, for a total of $343.14, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
My next resolution is for the appointment of legal counsel that supports us with our municipal tax appeals pursuant to the same NJSA 1944A 20.4 and 20.5 as a non-fair and open. The appointment of the law firm of Pyros Zena Sefali Paris and Genatempo here in Nutley, specifically Frank Zena has done a superb job in representing the township. However, the fees for next year will be reduced from $75,000 to $60,000 for the year 2018. The business entity disclosure certifications have been filed, and funds are certified subject to the adoption of the 2018 municipal budget. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that the Mayor be, is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Frank Zena Esquire of the law firm of Pyros Zena Sefali Paris and Genatempo as a professional service, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The next resolution is for legal services in support of the Code Enforcement Department, land use policy and procedures pursuant to NJSA 40A 11.5, 1AI, appointment of Angelo Sefali from the law firm of Pyros Zena Sefali Paris and Genatempo. The fee is being reduced from $15,500 down to $10,000 for 2018. Business entity disclosure certifications have been filed, and the funds are available subject to the adoption of the 2018 budget. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Angelo Sefali Esquire of the law firm of Pyros Zena Sefali Paris and Genatempo as a professional service, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
I have other resolutions that I'll address that the township participates in various county and state purchasing cooperatives because it's efficient for us to do that, and there's been, there was always a significant amount of vetting as to the price controls, which is to our advantage to be a participant. So my first one is the township pursuant to NJSA 40A 11-11, made by a resolution without advertising for bids, purchase any goods or services under an approved county cooperative purchasing program. The township has a need to, on a timely basis, to purchase such goods from the Essex County Cooperative Purchasing Program, and the township intends to enter into contracts with the Essex County Purchasing Program through this resolution and properly executed contracts, which shall be subject to all the conditions applicable under current contract law. Now therefore, the Township of Nutley authorizes the purchasing agent to purchase goods and services from this approved cooperative vendor pursuant to all conditions of the individual county contracts. Be it further resolved that the governing body pursuant to NJAC 5:35.5B, the certification of available funds shall either certify the full maximum amount against the budget at the time the contract is ordered, or no contract shall be chargeable or certified until such time as the goods or services are ordered or otherwise called for prior to placing the order and certification of available funds made by the Chief Financial Officer. And it basically means that unless we have the money to purchase it, we won't be able to purchase it. The next one is the same as my first. I'm sorry, move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
My next resolution, 29517, is similar for us to participate in the State of New Jersey cooperative purchasing program. And now therefore be resolved that the township authorizes the purchasing agent to purchase goods and services from any approved state, New Jersey state contract vendor pursuant to all conditions of the state contract, and it's subject to the same provisions that we will only be able to purchase unless the full maximum, only when the full maximum of funds are available at the time the contract is awarded, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley pursuant to NJSA 48:111, made by resolution with advertising purchase any goods and services under the approved National Cooperative Purchasing Program, whereas the Township of Nutley has a need, on a timely basis, to purchase goods and services utilizing the following national cooperative purchasing programs, U.S. Communities' Government Purchasing Alliance, the National Joint Powers Alliance, the Keystone Purchasing Network, and HGAC BY, whereas the township intends to enter into these contracts with U.S. Communities' Government Purchasing Alliance contract vendors through this resolution and properly executed contracts, which will be subject to all the conditions of current contract law. Now therefore be resolved that Township of Nutley authorizes the purchasing agent to purchase goods and services from those approved U.S. Communities' Government Purchasing Alliance, the National Joint Powers Alliance, the Keystone Purchasing Network, and NHDAC BY vendors pursuant to all the conditions of the individual contracts for the year 2018, commencing January 1, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, the Treasurer be, and she is hereby authorized to refund senior citizen property tax deductions for the year 2017 in the amount of $500, and listed below, taxpayers are eligible to receive $250 each, Block 5601, Lot 33, and Lot 8102, Lot 24, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci? Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Treasurer being, she is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of tax charges in the amount of two hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty cents for block five, five zero zero one, lot fifteen. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley through the Department of Revenue and Finance has a need to acquire elevator inspection services on behalf of the township as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to provisions of NJSA nineteen colon forty-four A or twenty dot five as appropriate. Whereas EIC Inspection Agency Corporation, three thirty, thirty-seven, thirty-seven oh five Kennedy Boulevard, Jersey City, has submitted a proposal indicating they will provide such services for ninety-five percent of the State of New Jersey fee and thirty percent of the, of the township administrative fee, the sum not to exceed twenty-four thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars. The term of the contract is twelve months. They have submitted their business entity disclosure certifications and funds are available subject to the adoption of the two hundred, two thousand and eighteen budget, which will be certified by the chief financial officer. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley, State of New Jersey, as follows. One, a contract shall be entered into between the Township of Nutley and EIC Inspection Agency Corporation for elevator inspection services. A copy of this resolution, as well as a contract, shall be placed on file in the municipal clerk's office. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas certain general capital improvement appropriation balances remain dedicated to projects now completed where, as it is necessary to formally cancel said balances so that the unexpendated balances may be returned to each respective capital improvement fund or credited surplus and unused debt authorization may be canceled. Now therefore be resolved by the Court, Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, that the following unexpendate dedicated balances of general capital appropriation be canceled. The total amount is one hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-seven cents. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petracco?
Be, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that in accordance with provisions RS forty-eight four dash fifty-eight, the following transfers of appropriation in the two thousand and seventeen budget be in the same or hereby authorized and approved. Fire salary and wage moved to fire over the amount of fifty thousand. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas resolution number one forty dash seventeen was adopted by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley at their meeting held on Tuesday, June twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, authorizing the renewal of liquor licenses for the period July first to June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. And whereas pursuant to NJSA thirty-three colon one dash twelve point three nine, an inactive pocket license can only be renewed once the licensee obtains a special ruling issued by the Director of the New Jersey Division about alcohol beverage control. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that resolution number one forty dash seventeen be and is hereby amended to remove the renewal of license number oh seven one six thirty-three oh one seven oh one oh issued to FNS Maintenance LLC and move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations, Friends of the Phoenix Center Foundation Incorporated, license number fifty-eight dash seventeen, Non-Premise Fifty-Fifty Cash Raffle to be held Friday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, and Friends of Phoenix Center Foundation, Inc., license number fifty-nine dash seventeen, Casino Night, Friday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the Municipal Clerk and the Police Department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned license, licenses are approved and the Municipal Clerk is authorized to issue the raffle license. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Whereas the Nutley Board of Commissioners and the Nutley Chief of Police have approved the following plenary retail distribution license to be open nine AM to nine PM on Christmas Eve, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and seventeen, and New Year's Eve, December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. Majah, Inc., trading as Heller and Heller, Franklin Wine Shop, trading as Nutley Wine Shop, and Majada Av LLC, trading as Nutley News and Liquors. Whereas the above plenary retail distribution licenses are only permitted to be opened during the hours on the above dates and times. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that in accordance with the provisions of RS forty-eight forty dash fifty-eight, the following transfers of appropriations in two thousand and seventeen budget be in the same or hereby authorized and approved. From snow removal salary and wage, twenty thousand dollars, to snow removal of other expenses, twenty thousand dollars. From sewer system, other expenses, eight thousand dollars, to parking lot and meter maintenance salary and wage, eight thousand dollars, for a grand total of twenty-eight thousand dollars. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State
of New Jersey, that in accordance with the provisions of RS forty-eight forty dash fifty-eight, the following transfers of appropriations in two thousand and seventeen budget be in the same or hereby authorized and approved. From snow removal salary and wage, twenty thousand dollars, to snow removal of other expenses, twenty thousand dollars. From sewer system, other expenses, eight thousand dollars, to parking lot and meter maintenance salary and wage, eight thousand dollars, for a grand total of twenty-eight thousand dollars. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. That concludes the business portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizen comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Good evening. My name is Charles, I live at thirty-four Woodland Ave., New Jersey. As you know, four months ago today, I have a nice, beautiful presentation with regard to a three-tier development project. There's several, both in between then and now, speakers to new G D S, the head of the project, and letters on the advice of a friend. I went off to prison in Bluefield, actually, and much to my surprise, I did get a chair from me, Mr. P S. And I can tell you, just a few minutes I was with him, he's a very intelligent and impressive individual. It's not like I could figure out why he's so successful. During the course of the conversation, some of the dialogue was that the assistant living part of the Roche Development Project has a high level of certainty of being prudent. And he was very much open to the additional idea of myself for the three-tier nursing home. I gave him the same petition when I met with him and I gave it to Kurt Pettis the last time that the commission met. Met this month, I think it would be December fifth. Just like I said, a few minutes I was with him there, he's not a torturer, he's a doer this man. He wants to bring the Roche Development to completion and get it up in money and to benefit the citizens of Nutley and Clifton. And I know the commission has the same commitment as far as an affinity to citizens of Nutley. But he told me he wants to hear from you, from our leadership, from the Nutley Commissioners, the mayor, the mayor of Clifton, the councilman of Clifton, as far as my petition or any other suggestions or petitions that anybody had. So that nothing gets lost in the process. Helped his sleep with that. He went on to say that he respects all of you very much, the high level of professionalism in this matter that you have shown. And in particular, he spoke about Commissioner Evans, that Commissioner Evans is, in the world of business, one of the best in finance he has ever come across, but a compliment to come to Mr. P S. And, you know, I just implored him to, whatever you can do to influence this to happen, I'd be greatly personally appreciative. He, he not only just wants to bring it to completion, he wants something that is going to be there to benefit and enhance the quality of life of the citizens of Nutley and Clifton into the future. Like a vision, he wants this to last a long time, whatever it is put there. So with that, I just wanted to bring you up to date that I didn't get a chance to meet you then, much to my surprise, and I thank you for your time and whatever efforts you could put into this. And I know, not just on this issue, I know more who's sitting up there tonight are very committed to this, I know that. And I just want to personally wish all of you, your families, everyone present here tonight, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, whatever holiday it is that you do celebrate. Happy and healthy New Year. And I thank Ms. Penny Landry, Ms. Blair, and Mrs. Tony Bertray helping with the petitions. Thank you very much. Happy and healthy holiday season to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Michael Odger, one thirty-three High Street. This is my five-minute comment. It's been a quite contentious couple of weeks. The failure of the BOE referendum in this town that's only three point four square miles, and the majority of the people who voted against it, who actually took the time to vote against this referendum, this seventy point four million dollar referendum, I think they were sending, I know they were sending a clear message, not only to the B O C, but the BOE, and also the members of the planning and zoning board, not to do anything that would raise our property taxes higher. I think the toleration label, the toleration level of high property taxes is wrong, it's been passed. And what I'd like to say is, I'd like to thank the people who did vote in this BOE referendum, and thankfully voted it down, because there's also a lot of fear of what's going to go on in January with Phil Murphy taking over the state, and everything that comes out of his mouth is about raising taxes. Even though it might be on millionaires, it's going to bleed on the middle class and the poor homeowners of not just Nutley, but the rest of the state, because there's not enough millionaires in the state to accomplish the fifty-seven or sixty billion dollars worth of stuff he wants to do, especially when our budget for this state is thirty-five billion dollars a year. And also with the Trump tax deductions that we're not, we're not going to get anymore, that's another reason why these people, the good people of this town voted against this BOE referendum, in my opinion. And since we have a new year coming, I just have some suggestions. Yeah, let there be some more transparency. What else have I written down? Also, when it comes to agenda items, instead of just three minutes, maybe a couple more minutes added to address the agenda items, to get some input from the public that are willing to show up and I think more will be showing up. And also, someone who's already hired by the town if it needed, if, if a person wants to, one of your constituents would like to speak to that person, get a message, just think clearly to interview fine gentlemen, so let that be done. Because if this is not going to work anymore, maybe this town needs a new form of government. I understand what all your positions are and what you do, and, you know, you different gentlemen take care of different aspects of the town, but I think this time, this year, two thousand and seventeen, December twelfth, the good people of this town who actually took the time out to vote, vote against this BOE referendum, sent a clear message. We're not tolerating property tax hikes anymore. We're kind of done. I mean, the last BOE referendum that cost us fifty million dollars and completely failed, we're kind of done, we're spent. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Odger. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
We're in Moore, four sixty-two Chestnut Street. Mr. Scarpelli, my two questions are for Mr. Evans. I have, I don't know if you want to see the papers or not. They're from open requests that we'll answer.
What's your question?
On the first one, Millennial, I believe we hired them to help write for grant, grant writers. I thought we had somebody in house that did the grant writing, maybe I was, I was wrong. My concern was, the blank, it says thirty-three hundred dollars, services rendered. All the other ones I had were itemized, what they did. Is there a reason that Millennial doesn't say what type of grant they're going for? Not that you need specifics to say, ADOs for the police department or whatever. That can't be listed there?
It doesn't have to be listed here, but they provide a monthly report of the progress of what they do, the, what they've applied for, what's in progress, what they've won, what they've lost.
Isn't, isn't it possible to list that? Because even with the legal, Mr. Jennings Tempo, they'd list at least what they were working on and how long it was.
I'll look at it.
Okay, okay. And on the other one, with a grave concern, that's the ATT building, it was your department, you have three tele, you have three mobile phones? There's no phone calls on there? It's only data transfer?
And your point?
The point is, what, what kind of data we transfer on over a mobile phone for?
If I look at my emails, which are connected to my business phone, that's, that would be data. So I don't.
So at all three, you check, all three checked? It's all three numbers there? There's no phone calls?
Yeah. And does a phone have to be used for a phone call? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, no. My suggestion is that if you're going to have a data transfer, I would assume that the servers are protected with security. If you're doing data transfer over a phone, you might not have the same level of security. And if, I don't know what kind of data you're transferring, and that's, that's not obvious. But my concern is, are we going to go around the regular security system that we have to protect it?
Jason Kirk is highly competent, and we have a very strong security network, and we wouldn't be allowed to do that.
But not on the phone?
I would have to yield to him as the expert, but I'm not aware of any issue with security and using a data transfer when you're looking at emails on your phone.
Could I get some kind of assurance? Can I talk to Jason about that? Because I'd like to know what kind of data we're transferring over a mobile phone.
He works for Commissioner Tucci, so I would ask him that question.
I'll take care of it. Oh, and one last follow-up question, if I may. On the fire engine, we got insurance money, we're putting the down payment down. Is there going to be, what is the town actually going to contribute to the whole cost of the fire engine?
I don't know the, the net insurance settlement yet, but I would expect that it would be the gross purchase price, lest the insurance proceeds equal in that price, and this is a down payment.
Do we have to finance the rest of the, the funding for the fire engine? Will that be financed?
No, the fire truck, what we do, especially for large purchases, we spread them out over time, so the money is already available for that fire truck, so we would not have to do a bond ordinance to actually establish new debt. It's already been factored in over the last five years.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Hi, Matt Brown, twenty-six Woodland Ave., Nutley. As one of the prior speakers laid out, the voters of Nutley a week ago, or at least a quarter of them anyway, basically voted to continue sending their children to overcrowded schools. I don't think they really want their children going to school in trailers. I think the prior speaker was right, they're concerned about property taxes, they're concerned about the GOP bill that just, that passed today, as a matter of fact. But I also believe that, that part of that no vote had to do with the mistrust of municipal government. I don't think the town has any faith in the government to fix the overcrowding situation that's been going on for at least fifteen years, based on the data that I've seen. I don't think that the voters have any faith in the municipal government to curb the overdevelopment and the overcrowding that's been going on. Please answer my questions at the end, not up front, but have we ever, as a town, pushed back on a developer? Have we ever asked them to reconsider their unit mix on multifamily development? Have we ever asked them to consider possibly a fifty-five and over property? Have we ever asked them to consider a use other than residential, when maybe residential's what they wanted? And the reason I ask these questions is because we have a tremendous opportunity in front of us in the Roche property. It's one of the premier properties in New Jersey, if not the East Coast, has the potential to generate tremendous tax revenue for this town. And I just want to make sure that, that we do the right thing, that we do what's right for Nutley, and push back with Gene Diaz to the extent that we need to. Thank you. If there's any feedback, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Penny Landry, one three-five Lakeside Drive. The Board of Commissioners met in executive session prior to coming out into the chambers. The reasons for executive sessions were listed as personnel, contracts, litigation, and property acquisition. Board of Ed members Brenda Sherman, Danny Cornicella, Sal Farrar, and Superintendent Glazer met in executive session with the Board. Could you tell me which of the following reasons, personnel, contracts, litigation, or property acquisition?
Mr. John Tempo?
Yes, the dealing of the property acquisition, that was the topic.
So the Board of Ed members met with the Board of Commissioners about property acquisition.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Second question. Topology, Inc. is our redevelopment planner for the Chickolini property and Phase Two redevelopment of the Roche property, correct?
Correct.
And as I understand, they're in the back conference room preparing to give a presentation on the redevelopment plan for Phase Two of the Roche development.
The redevelopment plan is a negotiated matter that we're going to be negotiating. It's part of our contract negotiations, and I, I'm assuming you saw them enter the building, so, yes.
I saw what?
You saw them entering the building, yeah.
Yes, well, they were back there, and I said, what are you guys here? And they said, we're, we're here to do a presentation to the Board of Commissioners on the Phase One redevelopment plan that we're going to submit to prison. So I was just wondering when the people of Nutley would also have an opportunity to see that presentation.
Yeah, but what you fail to understand is, there's a high level of negotiation going on. Topology is one of our consultants that is helping us negotiate with the developer. It's not ready for, for the public to see it because it hasn't been developed yet. These conversations with Gene Diaz that Mr. Farrar brought up, they're part of a regular conversation between Topology, the Commissioners, and the developer. Topology is working for us and for the town and for you to develop the best plan possible on a negotiated basis.
Right, I understand that.
So when that is ready to be rolled out, I'm sure the Commissioners will be happy. In fact, I know they're frustrated by the amount of time it's taking to get it out into the public. Believe me, that's their position.
Right, because Prismant has also said in the back room, back there, when they did And I don't know what kind of data you're transferring, that's not obvious. But my concern is, are we going to go around the regular security system that we have to protect it?
Jason Kirk is highly competent, and we have a very strong security network, and we wouldn't be allowed to do that.
But not on the phone?
I would have to yield to him as the expert, but I'm not aware of any issue with security and using a data transfer when you're looking at emails on your phone.
Could I get some kind of assurance, can I talk to Jason about that? Because I'd like to know what kind of data we're transferring over a mobile phone.
He works for Commissioner Tucci, so I would ask him that question.
I'll take care of it. Oh, and one last follow-up question, if I may. On the fire engine, we got insurance money, we're putting the down payment down, is it going to be, what is the town actually going to contribute to the whole cost of the fire engine?
I don't know the net insurance settlement yet, but I would expect that it would be the gross purchase price, lest the insurance proceeds equal in that price, and this is a down payment against.
Do we have to finance the rest of the fund for the fire engine? Will that be financed?
No, the fire truck, what we do, especially for large purchases, we spread them out over time, so the money is already available for that fire truck, so we would not have to do a bond ordinance to actually establish new debt. It's already been factored in over the last five years.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else like to address the board of commissioners this evening?
Hi, Matt Brown, 26 Woodland Ave., Nutley. As one of the prior speakers laid out, the voters of Nutley a week ago, or at least a quarter of them anyway, basically voted to continue sending their children to overcrowded schools. I don't think they really want their children going to school in trailers. I think the prior speaker was right, they're concerned about property taxes, they're concerned about the GOP bill that passed today, as a matter of fact. But I also believe that part of that no vote had to do with the mistrust of municipal government. I don't think the town has any faith in the government to fix the overcrowding situation that's been going on for at least 15 years, based on the data that I've seen. I don't think that the voters have any faith in the municipal government to curb the overdevelopment and the overcrowding that's been going on. Please answer my questions at the end, not up front, but have we ever, as a town, pushed back on a developer? Have we ever asked them to reconsider their unit mix on a multifamily development? Have we ever asked them to consider possibly a 55 and over property? Have we ever asked them to consider a use other than residential, when maybe residential's what they wanted? The reason I ask these questions is because we have a tremendous opportunity in front of us in the Roche property. It's one of the premier properties in New Jersey, if not the East Coast, has the potential to generate tremendous tax revenue for this town. And I just want to make sure that we do the right thing, that we do what's right for Nutley, and push back with Gene Diaz to the extent that we need to. Thank you, if there's any feedback, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the board of commissioners this evening?
Penny Landry, 135 Lakeside Drive. The board of commissioners met in executive session prior to coming out into the chambers. The reasons for executive sessions were listed as personnel, contracts, litigation, and property acquisition. Board of Ed members Brenda Sherman, Danny Cornicella, Sal Ferrara, and Superintendent Glazer met in executive session with the board. Could you tell me which are the following reasons, personnel, contracts, litigation, or property acquisition?
Mr. Jennings Tempo?
Yes, the dealing of the property acquisition, that was the topic.
So the board of Ed members met with the board of commissioners about property acquisition?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Second question. Topology Inc. is our redevelopment planner for the Chickolini property and Phase Two redevelopment of the Roche property, correct?
Correct.
And as I understand, they're in the back conference room preparing to give a presentation on the redevelopment plan for Phase Two of the Roche development.
The redevelopment plan is a negotiated matter that we're going to be negotiating. It's part of our contract negotiations, and I'm assuming you saw them enter the building, so, yes.
I saw what?
You saw them entering the building, yeah.
Yes, well, they were back there, and I said, "What are you guys here?" And they said, "We're here to do a presentation to the board of commissioners on the Phase One redevelopment plan that we're going to submit to PRISM." So I was just wondering when the people of Nutley would also have an opportunity to see that presentation.
Yeah, but what you fail to understand is, there's a high level of negotiation going on. Topology is one of our consultants that is helping us negotiate with the developer. It's not ready for the public to see it because it hasn't been developed yet. These conversations with Gene Diaz that Mr. Farrar brought up, they're part of a regular conversation between Topology, the commissioners, and the developer. Topology is working for us and for the town and for you to develop the best plan possible on a negotiated basis.
Right, I understand that.
So when that is ready to be rolled out, I'm sure the commissioners will be happy. In fact, I know they're frustrated by the amount of time it's taking to get it out into the public. Believe me, that's their position.
Right, because PRISM had also said in the back room, back there, when they did the presentation in the back room, Mr. Diaz said that they would be doing town halls in order to get input from Nutley citizens about what they wanted. Do you know if they are going to keep their word and have a town hall?
I have no, if I may, I have no reason to doubt them. They just rolled out their website, I'm sure you saw it. And as you can see, Gene Diaz is highly involved in multiple negotiations, and some of the things the commissioners are allowed to discuss and some they're not in public. But these things are active, and every week, there's some movement. So I have no doubt he's going to have a public presentation. He keeps repeating and telling us he's going to, so we have no doubt that that's going to happen.
Do you guys have any influence in having him have one? I mean, having-
The problem is, Penny, there's nothing to present yet until he has something concrete. And I think he's trying to put these things in motion and solidify his deals so that they can start to become public.
Well, because I know that his online presence, you know, he says, "Tell us," like we had that "Tell Us What You Want" survey that was done years ago that nothing ever really came out of. So I'm just wondering if you guys could make the request of him that there be a compilation of ideas-
That's on his website, you saw that, right?
But you don't see what people submitted.
Well, that's going to be for him, we can't control exactly-
No, I'm just making a request that you make the request of him, whoever meets with him.
I would assume that's going to be made public by him. He's gathering the data, so-
Okay, so you guys are saying that you don't really have any influence over what he does?
I didn't say that.
Okay, well, I'm asking if you can ask him.
I think the commissioners will take that under advisement, for sure.
Okay, so the request is that you ask Mr. Diaz if he would be willing to do a compilation of all the ideas that have been submitted on his website, so that the citizens of Nutley can see what the ideas are, or what the people of Nutley are submitting as ideas for redevelopment of the Roche site, which would include Mr. Farrar's three-tiered nursing facility or extended care facility. So it would be nice just to see-
Sure, I'll discuss that with the commissioner.
Thank you, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of you.
Thank you, Mrs. Landry. Anybody else like to address the board of commissioners this evening? Motion to close the public comment portion of the meeting?
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Commissioner, I see you want to speak.
Chomping at the bit, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to share with you tonight, the names of two hometown heroes. These are individuals that most people in town probably don't know, some of you do know, but we lost them this month in December, and I'll give you one of the names, and one of the names was Alice Lynch. Now, Alice was up in her 90s. She was the first woman, I believe, in Nutley to be a grand marshal in our Memorial Day Parade. But what's very significant about Alice Lynch is that she was a World War II hero. Alice Lynch was, I believe, an officer, I believe it was in the Navy, could be Army, but I believe it was the Navy, and she was in the nurses' corps. I had the pleasure of meeting her when we decided to present medals to our veterans here in town, and boy, what a role model Alice was. Always helping her neighbors, even in her 90s, her door was open to her neighbors and people in Nutley. And I mention Alice in particularly because, you know, I know I've mentioned this over and over again, but it's important. My mother once gave me a certificate that she had been awarded by the Department of Defense. My father was overseas fighting World War II, my mother was working in a factory in Brooklyn Navy Yard. And she showed me this, and I said, "You know, I never learned about women serving this country, whether it be overseas in war or here at home." And I remembered, you know, we got to do more, we got to do more to let young people know, and in this day and age, particularly young women, know that there is a history, a great history in this country, of women contributing to the freedom that we so often hear about us fellows fighting for. But Alice Lynch was that woman in Nutley. Loved this town guy, she was here her whole life, her children are still living here, and I thought it would be appropriate to let you know about her. Now, someone else, who maybe some of you know, who I only had the pleasure of meeting twice and learned, I was actually shocked that I learned that this woman had passed away in December, Carol Muir. Now, Carol, who in the world is Carol Muir? I met her twice, and Carol was an individual who used social media, think about this, Facebook in particular, to do what? To give positive messages to people and to really praise this town. She always talked about the beauty of America, the beauty of this town, the beauty of people. And I would go to her Facebook page. Sometimes, you know, you get a little down, you get a little distressed, you know, I go to the Bible a lot, and certainly know what that book says, but we had someone here in town, Carol Muir, who just got up on that Facebook page every day, and there was a poem, there was a picture of a flower with an explanation on how it blossomed, and she would talk about life, and she would talk about so many positive things about our community and our country. And in the day and age when we see social media being used by people that are just hammering the hell out of everybody, and the hate and the pain that these individuals inflict on people, here was a hero in Nutley, a hometown hero, whose name will never be printed in newspapers and who will never see on lights of Broadway. But that, to me, is a hometown hero who certainly, I believe, deserves some mention tonight. So I close out my year here praising these two individuals and thanking God that personally I had the opportunity to meet them, and personally, we had the opportunity to have them live in this town. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just want to address some of the questions that came up tonight. I'm sorry some of the people left that asked the questions, but the opportunities on the former Roche site are tremendous, and this board of commissioners is working hard to make sure that whatever gets developed on that site over the next, you know, five years leads this town into the next century. And to think that we're not working hard or to question the way we're working, I think is, you know, it doesn't realize that some of the work that goes on when we're not here from 7:00 to 9:30. So I just wanted to reiterate that we're out there and we're working hard. And we have a tremendous burden on us to make sure that that development is the future of Nutley. That's all I'd say.
I just, I'd like to add a little bit to that, too. I think there's a lot of false rumors going on out there about what the ratables are going to be on the Roche site, and, you know, a lot of people are in the, they think that it's going to actually generate more money than Roche was paying, and I know we've talked about that, that's our hope, but I don't think that's going to be a reality myself. So there's been a lot of questions about the development over town, and I think that, not to get all into it a few days before Christmas right now, I don't think is appropriate, but I think that we really should have some, a town forum as soon as we can, as soon as we gather the information, and really get the public involved in this, because I think everybody needs to be educated so they know, you know, what we're faced with. I've said this time and time again, we're an extension of the people. I think it's our jobs to put the facts out there and then get the feedback from the public and see what they want. You know, if it's, you know, fixing the schools or not fixing the schools, or building, developing or not building, but I think that we should really push in 2018 to really get the public involved and really have some public forums. And I'd just like to wish everybody a happy holiday and Merry Christmas.
Just to echo, we've already agreed as a board that we're actually going to do that. It's not a question, I think it's a reality of when we'll do that, and that we're actually going through a zero-based process to come up to present what, you know, the cost of the town is on the municipal side in our operations as we go forward, and I think that work is proceeding and that it'll be ripe, you know, early in 2018 to address the public before we get into any adoption of our budget for 2018. So I think, you know, I think that's a very important thing that we need to do. I also think that a lot of issues are getting collapsed into soundbites that are very complex. The, and I've talked with, you know, many residents about this, and it's very easy to say overcrowding, but to understand what the drivers are behind that, I think is very essential to actually making a sound decision. Because it's easy to point to an apartment and say, "If we didn't have those apartments, we wouldn't have overcrowding," and that's actually not true, right? There are drivers that have influenced overcrowding is the advancements in educational curricula, the complexity of curricula, which is pressuring to have a smaller classroom size. Classroom is big enough to put more kids in it, but from an academic development standpoint, probably not wise. So we have that issue to deal with. There's been, you know, significant increases in the responsibility and demands around the needs of special needs children. So it's great to have a classroom that can have 35 students in it, but when it's mandated by law that you can have four special needs children in it, obviously your infrastructure becomes strained. And there's a host of issues just like that, that I think have to be better understood by the public, so that they just don't get used to the idea that you can actually reduce it to a simple soundbite and say that's it. I do think there's a significant amount of uncertainty that we're dealing with, especially with the openness of having to live off of, for a while, temporary aid versus permanent aid, the unknowns around what the revenue outlook will be ultimately for the off the Roche property. And I think the other piece is that, you know, not losing sight of the fact that some of the areas where there has been development was in areas where it was contaminated property and it was underused and undertaxed. A vacant property on Franklin Avenue in a warehousing manufacturing building was vacant for what, 15 years, right? So that's been converted to a ratable versus what it was, and a more significant ratable. So I think the opportunity for the, to be in front of the public, to actually talk about these things in detail so that they are better understood, and that what all of the commissioners are doing in the departments to address this, I think was something, I would echo, is obviously very, very valuable. And, you know, with that, you know, I wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, and in my own circumstance, I'm in very good health and looking forward to a very healthy 2018.
Well, on behalf of the board of commissioners, we wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, and a healthy and happy New Year. And I have a motion to go back into executive session to discuss, Mr. Jennings Tempo?
Litigation, contract negotiation.
Personnel.
And personnel, correct.
I make a motion, we go into executive session for aforementioned reasons.
Second. Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975 permits the exclusion of public in meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, and now therefore be a resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley movement to close executive session to discuss personnel, litigation, and contract negotiations, be it further resolved that at the time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public shall be when and such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and/or anticipated legal, personnel, contractual matters, and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Happy holidays, we'll be coming back on the record just to close the meeting, no further action will be taken.
Okay, time is 9:02.